Okay, planning board, we are live, we are recording, phone lines will remain off. Go for it.
Thanks, that, um, welcome to the East Hampton Town Planning Board meeting for July 23rd. Um, Jennifer Fokes, the Vice Chair, our Chair Ed Krug is not in attendance this evening. Uh, we had one item removed from the agenda at the request of the applicant. So the JHA Main Street Office will not be on the agenda. We had one Board of Review added at the end of the meeting. Um, and I just want to remind everybody here that this, there is no public portion of this meeting today, no public comment. Um, with that being said, I think we should just jump right into the Marx two-story infill. Chris, that is yours, and Lori, I see you're here for the applicant. Go ahead, sorry, I can't see you behind the.
Thank you, um, this should be a very quick wrap-up memo, this is for the Marx two-story infill site, Planet 20 Surfside Avenue in Montauk. Property 6.22 acres, it's on the Atlantic Ocean, and you can see it's partially cleared with some natural vegetation to the south and within coastal erosion overlay zone one, ocean littoral zone. This plan here shows the unit in an orange color that had the proposed work. And the scope of the work is this deck here is about forty and a half square feet. And it is proposed to be enclosed to provide a new foyer on the first floor and an office on the second story. Um, all within the existing footprints, um, the Office of Fire Prevention, the Town Consulting Engineer both signed off on it. It's missing from the report, but it'll also be subject to Architectural Review Board approval. That's, that's really it, um, if the board agrees, we find this application complete and ready for approval.
Thank you, Chris, Lori.
I have nothing to add.
Um, yeah, we've seen this a few times, last time we had a public hearing, no one weighed in. Um, I do think that it is ready for approval, if anyone else has any.
I've written ten pages. All good.
Um, alright, that was super quick. Um, does the planning board agree that the application is ready for approval?
Yes.
Yes, all in favor? Fabulous, um, the next one is the Meron EV Chargers Phase. Will, that is yours. Is the applicant here for that one? Yeah, it's you again, that's what I thought.
Okay, so this is the second review for an application to construct four new EV charging stations on concrete pads on the subject property located on Ocean View Terrace in Montauk. The project will have two phases with phase one including the construction of the first two chargers set back-to-back located further south on the site. And phase two will include the construction of the second two chargers also set back-to-back located further north. And here's the site plan showing the location of those chargers. This is where the proposed phase one chargers will go further south and the proposed phase two chargers a little bit further north. The EV chargers are intended to provide electric vehicle charging for four existing parking spaces, which are to be converted to EV charging only spaces as part of this application. The application was last seen at the April 23rd, 2025 meeting, where the board made several comments and agreed no lighting is proposed, and the application qualifies as a minor site plan. First, the board requested the applicant submit dimensions of parking spaces proposed to be converted to EV charging only. The applicant submitted this revised survey with the dimensions, which show the northern pair of parking spaces to be converted are undersized at ten feet by fifteen feet. However, as no new parking spaces are proposed and the non-compliant spaces are shown in these dimensions attached to the most recent certificate of occupancy, it appears the applicants are not required to modify the dimensions of these spaces. The board should discuss whether it is practical to add charging stations to undersized parking spaces and whether it would be appropriate to relocate them to elsewhere on the site. Second, the board asked the applicant to clarify if the, if any new utility installation is required for the EV chargers. And the applicant stated the charging stations will be fed from an existing electrical panel in the basement of the adjacent building. And in conclusion, the planning department recommends this application is complete and ready for approval, provided the board agrees.
Thank you, Will, Lori.
I have nothing to add.
Michael, this is yours.
The current location of the proposed, uh, spots is fine with me. I think it's ready to go.
Anybody have any? I do wonder if there is another way to move those parking spots, I, I agree, I think it's ready. But the two undersized parking spots, that's the only question I have about this, the two to the north. Any reason for them?
They could, um, just if we put a sign on, they say, uh, compact. Compact chargers, that would be any test one?
Yeah. I agree, um, does the board agree this application is complete and ready for approval?
Yes.
Next is Estee Restaurant, Will, that is you again. And is the applicant here for that one? Lori? Alright.
Great. So this is the third review of a project proposing a new restaurant shed decks and parking on a site located on the southwestern corner of Montauk Highway and South Emory Street in Montauk. Currently, the site consists of two separate properties, which will be merged as part of this application. Combined, the property will be twenty-two thousand one hundred thirty-eight square feet or approximately half an acre in size. Currently, six-six-six Montauk Highway is improved with a cottage and deck, while three South Emory Street is improved with sheds, a bocce court, wood fencing, a pool patio, and a concrete swimming pool. The structures on three South Emory are accessory to the Adjacent Sands Hotel, which is located directly to the south. The project was last reviewed at the June 4th Planning Board meeting, where the board made several comments. First, the board asked the applicant to contact the Superintendent of Highways and New York State Department of Transportation about work in the right of way. And the applicant stated they have submitted applications to the New York State Department of Transportation and Superintendent of Highways. If the board agrees, the planning department recommends the applicant may submit these permits or letters of non-jurisdiction as a condition of approval. Second, the board requested the Town Consulting Engineer review drainage details, drainage calculations, grades, and contours of the site. The Town Consulting Engineer reviewed these details and recommended they are compliant. Third, the board requested the applicant work with the planning department to revise the circulation pattern in the western parking area. On the site plan, the western parking area is over here towards the bottom. After discussion with the planning department, the applicant removed parking space number fourteen in the parking area to provide a turnaround in that lot. And here you can see it's sort of shaded in green. Additionally, the applicant elongated the southernmost parking space in the eastern parking area to be ten feet wide and forty feet in depth, which will allow the space to be used both as a traditional parking spot as well as a truck or delivery parking space. The Town Consulting Engineer reviewed this revised layout and recommended it is also compliant. Fourth, the board requested the applicant add the tax map numbers, annotate the existing structures to be removed or demolished, and provide dimensions between buildings on the site plan. The applicant submitted this revised site plan, which the planning department reviewed and found sufficiently modified. Fifth, the board agreed to request lead agency status for the project pursuant to SECRAM. The planning department finds the provided EAF Part One to be in order, and the planning department will route lead agency letters to involved agencies after the board agrees that the application is complete. Following the previous review, the fire marshal reviews the proposed project and noted it was not ADA compliant, noting an elevator was required. In response, the applicant submitted revised plans which contained an elevator. At this time, updated comments from the fire marshal regarding ADA compliance are still pending. In conclusion, the board should discuss whether the map revisions are satisfactory, if any further modifications to the parking layout are needed, if the engineering issues have been adequately addressed, and whether the application is complete and ready to be scheduled for a public hearing.
Sorry, I'm reading. Nothing to add, okay, good, um, this is yours, Michael? Oh, I'm sorry, Dave.
Um, just a couple of comments, I, I do agree that I think the application submitted to the DOT and the Superintendent of Highways should just be submitted for the, for the record.
As a condition of approval.
As a condition of approval, yes. The parking, uh, arrangement, I think, was well worked. I am a little interested in the elongated parking, um, how, when it's not loading and unloading for deliveries, how that can be used as regular parking, since it's, it's long, but you couldn't fit two cars side by side.
I'm already one of the owners, um, that was actually requested from the, the planning team at the city. Um, it actually works out really well because our, the storage of our basement in the hotel is right there. So it was a great suggestion, um, and what we'll probably do is have some, I mean, I don't know, like some sort of barrier or whatever, but it'll, it'll remain a parking spot.
Okay.
Um, if, if that's kind of your primary concern, it'll definitely be a parking spot.
I was just interested how we would, you know, obviously during the day hours for deliveries, you know.
Yeah.
Common sense, but.
For, for better or worse, yeah, the companies don't come out too much, so even if we wanted, it's not going to be too frequent of deliveries. Um, but, uh, yeah, it'll be utilized, uh, otherwise.
Really, there's, you know, there's a couple of pending items, obviously, but it's subject to approval, so.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? Me either, um, so let's move to the questions from the planning department. Just want to make sure I have the right one here. Does the board wish to request lead agency status pursuant to SECRAM in Chapter 128 of the Town Code? Say yes. Should the applicant submit documentation of permits or letters of non-jurisdiction from the New York State Department of Transportation and East Hampton Superintendent of Highways as a condition of approval? Yes. Does the board find that any further revisions to the parking layout are needed? No. Are the map revisions acceptable, or are further revisions or any additional information needed at this time? Or will the application be complete and ready to be scheduled for a public hearing once a secret determination has been made? Yes. Yes. Thanks, everybody.
I would just like to make a request, if possible.
Oh, yeah.
I know you're going to do the SECRAM, and then you're also going to put a memo on saying it's now, uh, complete. If it's possible to be put the resolution scheduling of public hearing on the same year. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, subwaiver review, uh, for Kuhn. Um, Will, that is you again, and it's my application. You're here, there we go.
Alright, so this is the third review of an application seeking a subdivision waiver for a property located on Springs Fireplace Road in Springs. The project would create two twenty, twenty thousand square foot lots, both having road frontage on Springs Fireplace Road. The subject property is currently forty thousand square feet or zero point nine two acres and is within the B Residence District. Lot one is proposed to contain the existing residence, while lot two is proposed to contain a new residence to attach garage and pool, which are yet to be constructed. The site was originally two lots created as part of the Clearwater Beach subdivision approved in nineteen sixty. At some points, the lots were merged, and this application seeks to revert back to having two lots. The planning board conducted a coordinated review and routed lead agency request letters to, to involved agencies on June 16th, 2025. No responses were received from the involved agencies, and the planning board can now continue its review. The planning department prepared EAF Parts Two and Three and recommends a negative, negative declaration be adopted. The planning board should review the environmental assessment forms, Parts Two and Three, and determine whether it agrees the project will not cause significant environmental impacts and issue a negative declaration accordingly. Comments from the fire marshal found the submitted information submitted, found the submitted information sufficient and no further review necessary. In conclusion, provided the board agrees, the planning department recommends the application is complete and ready for a public hearing.
Thanks, Will, does the applicant wish to be heard? No? Great, um, so I also agree this seems to be another one where we're ready to move forward with scheduling a public hearing and declaring a negative declaration, so any other comments from anybody else? Does the board wish to make a negative declaration pursuant to SECRAM in Chapter 128 of the Town Code?
Yes.
You have to make a motion.
I make a motion that the board makes a negative declaration pursuant to SECRAM in Chapter 128 of the Town Code.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is the application complete and ready for a public hearing?
Yes.
Another subwaiver review, two sixty-seven Akabonic, thank you very much. That's Eric. He, I believe, is on virtually.
I am, how is everyone?
Hi, Eric. And is the applicant here for this one? Yes. Great. So Eric, whenever you're ready.
Yep, just starting a screen share.
Great.
Um, so this is an application to subdivide an approximately one point two acre lot into two lots, one of about twenty-eight thousand.
Eric, can I stop you for one second, Matt? Is there a way, or do we have the ability to make that a little bit louder?
I'm sorry, my mic might be turned down, we turned it up a little.
Want to make sure everyone can hear. Us old people.
Okay, I don't know if you can hear me now, is it better if I project?
Uh, I, it's about the same, I guess, that's fine. We'll just all.
Okay, let me, uh, really try to be loud.
That's better.
Okay, um, so it's an application to subdivide a roughly one point two acre lot into two lots, one of approximately twenty-eight thousand six hundred square feet and one of, um, twenty-four thousand square feet. Um, the planning board last reviewed this on May 7th, uh, the first comment was that the map had to be changed to have the proper application title, that has been completed. Uh, the second comment of the planning board was that the applicant should submit a revised revegetation plan indicating the size of the easement, intention of the existing evergreen perimeter plantings in the southeast, uh, and add the name of their preparer as a condition of approval. It appears that, um, the applicants have addressed all of this. They've submitted a revised revegetation plan, which actually I will scroll down to, but I need to reorient the screen. Uh, it is this last document here. Um, but basically, the revegetation plan, uh, includes leading, uh, leaving the canopy of mature deciduous trees and, uh, filling in the understory with bayberry, which is, uh, pretty standard for deciduous woodland habitat revegetation, so we find it acceptable. The board should determine if they agree. And then the, uh, final comment that the board made was about, uh, drainage, um, and the number of drywells. Uh, the applicants have made this revision, and in fact, the, uh, town engineer has reviewed this and signed off on it. Um, additionally, the Office of Fire Prevention has signed off on the project. The planning department prepared an environmental assessment form, Parts Two and Three, uh, and attached it to the memorandum. A negative declaration is recommended, and provided the board does make that negative declaration, um, then, uh, if there are no additional comments or changes to any of the plans, then the application is complete, ready to be scheduled for a public hearing.
Thanks, Eric. Would you like to be heard? Thank you. Stick your name, please.
Hi, uh, my name's Samantha Malone, I'm here from Tarbit and Lester on behalf of the applicant. Um, just here in case you have any questions, and we would respectfully request that, uh, it be scheduled for a public hearing.
Thank you. Um, this is mine, um, I have to say that I think the applicant has done a good job of making the changes and adding things, um, and answering all of our questions, so. Does anybody else have any? No. Everyone concurs, so we shall move to those, these questions. Um, are any changes to the revegetation plan needed, or does the board agree with the planning department that it is acceptable? Yes. Is any additional information required at this time? No. Does the planning board wish to make a negative declaration pursuant to SECRAM? Do I have to make a motion for that again? I make a motion to make a negative declaration pursuant to SECRAM for this application.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does the board agree this application is complete and ready to be scheduled for a public hearing? Yes. Alright, thank you very much. Thank you. And now, the one everyone, I believe, has been waiting for. I just want to remind everybody that there is no public hearing tonight, um, so we're just going through the application again. Eric has the application from the planning department side, and Reed, it is your application.
Okay, uh, let me screen share here, I will share the elevation drawing of the tower. Uh, this is an application for the onsite relocation of an existing but never approved one hundred fifty-foot tall stealth monopole with equipment for three individual cell carriers at different sectors and equipment for the Springs Fire Department at the property of the Springs Fire Department in Springs. Also proposed is a thirty-foot by seventy-foot fenced-in equipment compound, and equipment, uh, for carriers Verizon, Dish, and T-Mobile are proposed. So this application was last reviewed by the planning board on April 2nd. Uh, the planning board issued written comments and, uh, directions to the applicants. Uh, the first was that the board agreed with the planning department's previous recommendation about additional locations for photo simulations. The applicants provided this information, there were six, uh, individual additional sites recommended where the applicants would prepare visualizations of the, um, existing and proposed, uh, conditions. I will, um, go to, uh, the visuals that were provided. And so I'm not going to go through all of them, but I will note that these photo simulations are found on, um, page forty-six, I believe, or forty-eight, or, beginning on forty-one, but most of them, uh, on forty-eight. Um, the planning board should look through this information, um, but basically, to summarize, um, and I'm just going to go quickly back to the tower elevation, um, as I go through this section. Apologies. Uh, but basically, um, to summarize, so, um, the visualizations were, uh, based off of a balloon test, which is actually a code requirement that was performed on April 23rd, um, so with not full, uh, tree cover. Um, but basically, the tower would be substantially visible from various locations on Fort Pan Boulevard, Springs Fireplace Road, and Talmadge Farm Lane. The tower would be visible, although obscured, uh, at least on a seasonal basis from points on Springs Fireplace Road, uh, including in the vicinity of the Pollock-Krasner House and Talmadge Farm Lane. Uh, the tower would be largely invisible from Ashwag Hall, and the top of the tower would be visible from far locations, uh, such as Gerard Point and Laos Point. So basically, the board should determine if any, uh, any additional information pertaining to the visibility of the site is required at this time. Um, the board should discuss the visual impacts of the proposed project. Um, the planning department in the memorandum provided, um, went through, uh, a number of items that are codified that are in the Town Code, uh, as things that need to be addressed in staff reports. Uh, and most of these are related to visual impacts, so, um, I'd like to go through a few of them. Um, the first is whether or not the facility is in an avoidance area. Technically, this site is not in an avoidance area, however, it is close to the Springs Historic District, Pollock-Krasner House, which is on the National Register of Historic Places, and, um, Scenic Areas of Statewide Significance, the Akabonic Harbor Sub, uh, Subunit. And the distances, again, from the historic district is about six hundred ninety feet, from the Pollock-Krasner House about nine hundred and twenty-five feet, and from the border of the Scenic Area of Significance, um, nine hundred feet. So technically, it's not within five hundred feet of any of these locations, and isn't in an avoidance area, but we do want to make it clear that it is, uh, in proximity of some such designated areas. Um, whether or not the facility is in an opportunity site, I suppose that's in question. I think, um, with a broad interpretation of that section of the code, it is. It's on a privately owned site, it does have tree masses, um, and doesn't meet any of the avoidance area criteria. That would make it an opportunity site. The location standards are basically those, um, so based on that, uh, those have been met. Siting standards, which refers to the location on the actual property itself, um, we view as met. There doesn't appear to be a superior location on the subject parcel for citing the tower. It's proposed to be situated basically at the middle of the property, um, maximizing setback from adjoining properties. So also, we need to address, um, or identify, um, necessary practical measures to avoid, minimize, or mitigate, uh, adverse impacts of the wireless facility. So again, the tower is proposed at the center of the property, which avoids the need for any variances from, uh, fall zone requirements, and assures that a, a catastrophic collapse of the tower will not likely result in damaging adjacent properties or endangering any of their occupants. Uh, further, the, the design of the tower and associated equipment has been reviewed by the Towers, uh, Town Wireless Consulting firm, City State, and is found to meet, um, has been found to meet all applicable design standards and engineering requirements. Um, as previously mentioned, the tower would be visible, um, to the public and adjacent private property owners from various locations. However, the design of the tower as a stealth monopole without exterior mounted equipment arms and with a narrow profile should help mitigate these visual impacts. Uh, and then also, we make a note here that the Architectural, uh, Architectural Review Board will review, um, the, uh, application and really mainly focus on coloration and design elements. Um, so as far as the type of mount, again, this is a stealth monopole with all the antennas entirely within the structure. Um, the panel antenna details have been provided, um, they are panel antennas with associated control units, again, entirely within the support structure. Uh, I'll get to this in a second in another section, but the planning board will need to determine if screening and the location of the proposed equipment cabinet and equipment area is appropriate. Um, however, they have been situated near the center of the property. Provided adequate screening is, uh, provided, then there shouldn't be, uh, an issue of, um, code compliance. Um, so as far as the design standards, uh, the equipment does not project from the support structure at all and therefore does not exceed any of the thresholds in the code. Um, there are design standards in the code that dictate how much, um, arm mounts or panel antennas can protrude. Uh, in this case, there is no protrusion, because again, it's entirely internally mounted. So the code also calls for the applicants to consider alternatives. They submitted, um, information for three possible alternatives, all, uh, alternative locations. One being Camp Blue Bay, uh, they note that the site is already being developed with a personal wireless service facility, uh, and that cell service is still needed at the subject property to remedy a coverage gap. Um, there's also a town-owned property on the corner of Crandall and Norfolk, um, the, uh, woodland property. Uh, that site is owned by the town, um, however, there are other issues with this, uh, site not being eligible for a wireless facility. And again, it's a town-owned property, the town would need to have, um, uh, an interest in putting a facility there. Uh, and then the third that they offered was Spring School, um, and they noted that Elite Towers was unable to secure, um, the property owner's consent to, to pursue an application there, so. So, you know, as noted by the applicant, none of those alternative sites appear superior to the subject property, and the planning department acknowledges that, and also acknowledges the coverage gap that exists in Eastern Springs, whereas the only one of those locations that's in Eastern Springs would have been Spring School. So, the code also requires staff to identify alternatives. We don't know of any other site within 1,000 feet of the subject property that would, you know, not meet the avoidance criteria and would meet the opportunity site criteria, with the exception of right-of-ways where small cell or tier ones could be installed. However, we do already have a number of active applications for small cell in this area of Springs, including from at least one of the carriers that's proposed for this application. Also, the propagation maps both provided by the applicants for this and other applications and as well as in our wireless master plan indicate that you're not going to be able to fill the entire coverage gap with just small cell. A macro facility is needed in this area. And then, also, again, another component of this application is that Springs Fire Department is proposing to put its equipment on this tower, and presumably, they need a relatively tall mount to do this. So, again, you know, it appears that with respect to the coverage gap, the site is ideal. However, this does not obviate the need to consider a shorter, less conspicuous tower at this site. Although the planning department notes the obvious fact that the shorter, the shorter the tower, the less visible it should be from adjacent public and private properties, we also note that this brings with it a decrease in the opportunity for co-location of carriers. The applicant currently proposes to provide equipment for the fire department and three separate cell carriers. A significant reduction in height would likely result in at least one of the carriers or one less carrier being able to co-locate, and in turn, would result in a proliferation of small cell installations to make up the difference. So, basically, the board should consider all of this information and discuss the potential visual impact of the proposed project. The board should also determine if additional information is required at this time to assess the impacts. But basically, you'll need to have a discussion about whether or not the visibility and the negative impacts that come from it supersede the applicant's efforts to mitigate those impacts and the community need for utility of this kind. So, the second comment that the planning board made was that the applicant should submit additional photo documentation to facilitate the determination regarding if the application would be suitable for a waiver from the landscaping requirements. So, this specifically relates to the equipment cabinet, and what I'm going to do is switch the visual to one of these renderings. There were two of these renderings in particular. The applicant did submit photo simulations and additional renderings to show what their equipment area and the screening would look like. So, what you have centered on the screen right now are the existing conditions, basically where they want to put their equipment area. It is to the rear of the site. It is effectively behind the main building on this property. But basically, this rendering, and I'll zoom in a little bit. Hopefully, that helps. I know it's a little tough to see there, but shows you that they have a fenced-in equipment compound with a row of six-foot-tall arbor byde, which are evergreen screening. The planning department finds this acceptable. However, the board should determine if you need additional screening of the equipment area. We do note that the code has specific guidelines for what the landscaping is supposed to be for a wireless facility, a tier-three facility, and this doesn't meet it to the letter of the code. Some of those requirements are really about landscaping around the perimeter of the site, the property, not specific to an equipment cabinet, equipment area. But the board should determine, but the board is also empowered by the code to accept basically any landscaping and screening that is offered by the applicant. We feel insufficient, but the board should determine if they agree. A couple of other elements here, lighting. The applicant hasn't proposed any exterior lighting. They did make a comment in their submission, though, that they might need one or two fixtures for the equipment area. The planning department notes that they could easily accomplish, or, you know, we could easily do a full review through an administrative outdoor lighting permit or modification in the future if they feel that they do need lighting. I wouldn't anticipate that they would need more than a few fixtures, just like the equipment area, and we could easily review that at a later date. So, the only other main outstanding item that I have is related to SECPRA. I listed some, in the memo, listed some specific corrections and revisions that need to be made to the EAF Part 1. That is the document that's provided by the applicant, essentially describing the project. Just very briefly, they didn't properly list all the permits that would be needed. They said to be determined as far as fuel storage and storage of hazardous materials. They should clarify for their generator and any other use, what amount or volume of fuel will be stored onsite. They identified that there were not any designated public resources in terms of historic resources in the immediate area. I'd like the EAF Part 1 to reflect the fact that a site on the National Register of Historic Places is nearby, as well as a historic district. And then, a technicality, the EAF mapper is supposed, is a program or the website that's supposed to be used in preparing that document. That should be done as well. Those are fairly easy changes to that document that should be made and must be made. And technically, the application should be once again deemed incomplete until that document with those revisions are submitted, and the shot clock on this application should stop until that revised document is provided. It should be fairly easy enough to provide that. Another thing to mention here is that the board did receive public comments, specifically SECPRA. I don't want to mischaracterize the public comment, so I encourage the board to read it for themselves. But basically, the public comment was that there was a previous application on this property for a cell tower that was given a positive declaration under SECPRA. A scope was adopted, and the applicants were directed to prepare an environmental impact statement. That was never prepared. The applicants have submitted this application as a separate and new application. The public comment basically states that the town can't process this as a new application because it's circumventing the requirements of SECPRA. In other words, they would, these applicants are required to prepare and submit a draft environmental impact statement. The planning department defers entirely to the town attorney's office for a sort of a final answer on this question, but we did confer with them and basically came to the conclusion that that is not the case. This application is substantially different from the one that predates it. Specifically, the previous application proposed a tower of nearly width, antenna is 199 feet above ground level. This tower is 150 feet above ground level, or roughly 25% shorter. The previous application proposed a new tower that was stated to principally be providing emergency services equipment, not cell equipment. So, basically, they were applying for a different use as a public utility. This application is proposing to be a personal wireless service facility. They are proposing emergency services equipment, too, but that's somewhat incidental, and they've submitted this as a wireless facility and addressed the specific standards in the code for that use. Town code provisions regarding fall zones and required property line setbacks have been amended since that previous application was submitted. But at the time, that application, because it was proposing a taller tower that was right on the property line, required multiple variances from the town code for fall zone requirements, still would today under the current regulations. The subject application requires no variances from these requirements. And then, the other discerning aspect here is that the previous application was for a monopole, but with exterior-mounted protruding support arms needed to support the cell antennas. The subject application is for a stealth monopole with all antennas interiorly mounted. If you want an example of a monopole with exterior mount arms of the height of the tower that was originally proposed in that previous application, you could look at the one that's near the northwest fire substation. That is 185 feet, nearly 200 with width antennas, and a monopole that has protruding arms. What the applicants are proposing in this application is much less conspicuous and a much more desired design. So, just to note that the code requires that this application be referred to the Architectural Review Board for their comments, to the town board. Their review will be on design features only. They will probably look at the coloration of the tower as a primary focus, but that is required and will be done shortly. So, basically, in conclusion, the application is incomplete pending the resolution of these issues and the submission of the required items. The board should discuss whether additional information pertaining to visibility, screening, and/or lighting needs to be submitted at this time, or if it agrees with the planning department that these issues have been satisfactorily addressed. The board should also determine if the EAF Part 1 needs to be revised, although the planning department views this as an issue of completeness of submission requirements, not a discretionary item. As referenced in the comments regarding design and visibility, the town code details the content of staff reports that must be provided for tier-three wireless facilities. The planning department has provided all the required information in the memo that went out and the one preceding it, with the exception of Part M, which is recommended decision, which includes findings of fact and a recommendation from the department to the board to approve or deny the application. The planning department will complete this aspect of the staff report subsequent to a board determination of significance under Chapter 128 of the town code in SECPRA and the application having been deemed complete and ready to be scheduled for a public hearing. So, basically, when this is entirely complete, we will give you a recommendation to that effect as required by the code, but we will wait until the board deems this application complete and makes a determination of significance under SECPRA. So, want to make sure I'm getting everything here. Yeah, okay. And I did address stopping the shot clock, which, you know, as the application has been completed, the very minimum for revising the EAF Part 1, the shot clock, as we refer to it under the federal regulations, as the board knows, there are federal guidelines that dictate that we, as a local municipality, issue or deny permits within 150 days for an application of this type. The shot clock should be stopped due to the incompleteness of the EAF Part 1, but as soon as that information is provided and/or additional information that the planning board might need, then the application would be, the shot clock would be told again, and we would be on the clock again. But just wanted to make that point, and that is basically the summary of this application.
Thank you, Eric. Does the applicant wish to be heard?
Yes. Good evening, vice chair members of the board. My name is Greg Alvarez from Amato Law Group, 666 Old Country Road, Garden City, New York, here on behalf of the applicant. Thank you for reviewing this evening of our application. Thank you, Eric, for walking through the details of your letter. I think just as a general big picture, we hope we have presented to you the required items that arose at the April 2nd meeting and was referenced in your April 4th letter. So, certainly, I think for purposes of tonight, that's our main focus. We understand the more substantive questions that are part of this application. We certainly welcome that discussion as well, and certainly something that'll be more fleshed out at the public hearing. So, we definitely look forward to that. But so, tonight, I'll just focus on making sure that we provide you the last items that were mentioned in Eric's report. So, I think generally, we're in agreement. I just want to, I just have a couple of comments and suggestions to hopefully wrap things up here, you know, notwithstanding, I think we did, if I may ask, Eric, I think we did receive a completeness letter as to this application, and so, these last items are just sort of to wrap up based on this continuing review. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, and I should clarify for the board, as far as the codified submission requirements, so documents that need to be provided and demonstrate compliance with FCC regulation, the application is absolutely complete in that regard, and we did send, and confirmed by the outside consultant, Cityscape, we sent a letter to the applicant confirming that. We did note in that letter, though, that there are other issues that the planning board needs to discuss, and, you know, that there might be further items and information needed, which, you know, is basically where we are today. But yes, they are complete as far as the code provides submission requirement.
All right. Thank you for that. And so, in that spirit, certainly, we want to provide you all of the information that, you know, is being sought here so that we are fully prepared for that public hearing to vet out all of the particular substantive issues. So, I think what I'll propose to say is that we would consent to that, to that stoppage of the shot clock, you know, with the understanding that, you know, we do look to address these last few items that have been referenced in pretty quick fashion. So, we would just respectfully request if we could be scheduled for a hearing in the interim based on that, because I'll just go through the items real quick that I think, as far as I understand, we need to provide you at this point. So, just running quickly through Eric's list, I think in terms of the visual analysis, we're hoping at this point that we have satisfied the requests from last time to provide those additional views. We actually had some additional views beyond that that were included, Eric did not mention, in terms of requests from community members who live nearby, so we've actually included those views as well. So, we're hopeful, hopeful we're complete on that front. In terms of the screening, certainly, we're just looking for your direction there, as Eric accurately described the code section. On one hand, it doesn't, the four corners of the code necessarily address it, but because of the unique nature of where we're locating this facility, that it's going to be essentially right in the center of the property, and the fact that there are existing pockets of vegetation at the perimeter of the property already, it seemed appropriate to try to address the comment by focusing our landscaping and screening on the immediate area that's surrounding our equipment. So, as Eric had showed you earlier, that would be the intended view with those 38 arbor bodies that would surround the screened fencing that would also be there. So, I just want to point that out. So, hopefully, at this point, we look for your direction on that, that at least in terms of proceeding to a public hearing, that that would be sufficient to allow us to proceed and for you to consider that as a proposal. Certainly, we welcome any further comments that may be connected with that item. Lighting, similarly, I think we're in agreement there in terms of if there is any lighting in the future that may be required. It may be, most likely, it would be involving the wireless carriers that would be co-locating on the pole. And so, if any of the carriers see a need for that, certainly, we would include that, they would include that as part of their subsequent applications. And so, for us, as a condition of approval that that would be the case, we would be amenable to that as to the arrangement moving forward in terms of site lighting. Okay, next is the EAF Part 1. So, I'd just like to point out one item there, and I do have William Sklar from BHB who would prepare the Part 1 EAF, so if there are any additional questions. But I'm just going to focus our attention on the question involving Part E3, the designated public resources. And I guess it's connected to the EAF mapper as well, where Eric had referenced earlier about the location of nearby historic districts, including the Pollock-Crasner House. While it's certainly in the vicinity, sort of the four corners of the EAF, and as directed by the DEC as well, we just want to make sure we're completely accurate in terms of how we would fill that particular question out. And right now, we've questioned, we've answered that question, no, because there are no historic, historically significant properties within 500 feet of property. That's, that's the bright line of the EAF. Now, that being said, we would certainly be amenable to leaving that answer as is, but perhaps adding an asterisk to note the locations of those other historic locations on the EAF itself, just to make sure that, again, we're in the four corners of what the EAF demands, and then that way, at least, it would acknowledge those other historic.
I'm going to defer to Eric on this question, as I'm not as familiar with the EAF form itself.
I was just going to chime in and say, I concur with that. I was just going to chime in and say, I concur with that. And, you know, it isn't within 500 feet of anything. I think, so I think that they're, they're not wrong in saying that, you know, it wouldn't be identified by the EAF mapper as immediately adjacent. I think, though, for the record, and, you know, for to sort of memorialize at the outset the conditions of this site and, you know, neighboring and nearby resources, it's best to have the record reflect right from the start, from the EAF Part One, which in many ways is an application description, to have that reflect that there is an awareness of the proximity of those historic resources. But we're not looking to hold the applicants to saying that they're in a historic district. We really just want the record to be clear that the applicants, and then in turn, the board, noted from sort of day one that those are in close proximity.
Okay. Yeah, and we would agree to that, that, you know, we'll note it as such as we discussed on the updated EAF. Okay. And I think that that would apply then to the mapper as well, correct? So the mapper is actually set so that it can only identify those properties within 500 feet? So I don't think there's a way, tell me if I'm wrong.
The EAF mapper won't show the.
Why don't you come up, actually?
Yeah, yeah, and introduce yourself, if you don't mind.
Hi, William Sklar, I'm Senior Environmental Planner with VHB. So we are happy to attach the EAF mapper results to the Part One EAF. Just noting that it won't indicate the historic resources results, but we will add a note to reflect as suggested by Eric.
Great.
And that's perfect. But that's all the department is looking for.
All right, perfect. So we'll, as long as that's also amenable to the Planning Board, we'll proceed in that fashion. Okay. And then just two more points. The first one is pretty straightforward. We will update the plan title to reflect the title that has been assigned to this application, so we'll certainly do that. And then for the question, just want to address also the public comment that did come in. It was by letter from Mr. Wayland, Wayland-Filer regarding the question of whether or not this application can proceed. So I think what we're talking about here is the question of res judicata, which basically, the concept is that to proceed with a new application at, at a site, there has to be what's described as material change to the aspects of the case. That's, that's the language. I can provide you the, the relevant second department case that, that sort of covers that. That's a matter of Hurley versus zoning board of Amityville from 2010. That's the second department. We'll plan on including that in our resubmission, of course, but I just wanted to highlight that, to point out that we are in agreement with both Eric's office and also the town attorney's office in terms of whether this application may proceed as a new application as opposed to being, you know, straddled with that prior application. It's a very different application in a lot of ways. Eric's already covered that. And the way that the case law reads is that it's very much in the discretion of the board to make that determination. It's not something that, you know, has a bright line rule, which is suggested in the letter that was provided, that it's actually quite the opposite. And so taking that into consideration and all of the changes that have been made to this application, which are quite significant, and in the words of the case law, material change, we think that is the case and allows us to proceed with this new application in that fashion. But that's something we'll also add to our submission to, to ensure that's, that's covered as well. So with that, at this time, we just look for your final direction in terms of these final items, and if we are in agreement, we'll proceed in turning around a resubmission in short order. And again, we just respectfully request that, you know, a hearing can be scheduled because we, if these are the last items, then we certainly think we can complete these in a very short time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Reed, this is yours.
Quick, I lost my seat.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wayland, there's no public comment on this one yet.
You just allowed the applicant's attorney to address you, and in fact, to deal with the very issue I want to talk to you about. So if you don't allow me to speak on behalf of the clients I represent, who are neighbors, you're depriving us of our due process rights. I have a right to speak if he can speak.
I respectfully disagree, but in the interest of keeping this moving along, you have three minutes.
Very good, thank you. Richard Wayland from Wayland-Filer P L L C. I represent neighbors to the project. Our concern is to, first of all, determine whether the tower is actually necessary, and if it's determined that a tower is needed here to minimize its height. You should not even be discussing this. The planning board posdecked this project in 2020, and you accepted a scoping outline submitted by the applicant in 2021. It's the same project. The fact that they withdrew the application and submitted a new application is utterly meaningless. If that's all you had to do to evade a positive declaration, everyone would do it. As far as the alleged differences between the project in 2020, 2021, and now, they're very minimal. Eric Shanson, his memo gives this four things that are different about the project. All of them were contemplated in the scoping outline. First of all, it was proposed basically as a cellular wireless communications tower in 2020, 2021. The applicant expressly said that their DIS would consider the impacts from a wireless service facility on the tower. That's number one. Second, the height of the tower was described in 2020, 21 in the DIS and the scoping outline as 180 feet tall. Now it's redone to 150 feet, but the, the option of having a lower tower was, again, an alternative that was expressly discussed in the scoping outline. In other words, the alternatives that were to be considered by the applicant in DIS included a shorter tower, a relocated tower, such as moving it more to the center of the property, and other technological changes which could contemplate, which could contemplate the enclosure within the so-called tower apparatus. So the project is not different. These are alternatives that were to have been considered in the DIS, and what the applicant decided to do is they said, well, let's, let's just go to the alternatives, slip that back in front of the planning board, and see if we can get them to remove the requirement for the DIS entirely. They're still subject to the positive declaration. I'm asking you, the planning department does not make the decision, you know that, it's your decision to make. I'm asking you to tell the applicant they are still required under your decision in 2020, and this 2021 scoping outline that they submitted and you accepted, that they have to submit a DIS. If you don't do that, I have to tell you, and I'll tell the applicant's attorneys, we will assert our rights in court. Thank you.
Thank you. Reed, back to you.
So, you know, wireless applications, especially new wireless applications, tend to be controversial. I don't want to overcomplicate this, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for you, Mr. Wayland, I sincerely do. I know you know the process, you know, planning. This is a simple relocation of just a few hundred feet, and I think it's unfair, quite frankly, to compare the 1999 application to the present form. You're comparing an apple to an orange. I sincerely believe that. The tower is needed. This tower is going to have personal wireless facility in it, personal wireless equipment in it, emergency services equipment in it. There's no viable alternative in the neighborhood. It's an opportunity site. It's a fire department. It's in the, it's being relocated to the center of the property, which I think makes a lot of sense. You talk about a fall zone. First of all, I've been told that the fall zone really doesn't matter, because these poles are designed in such a way that if there's a disaster, they crumple upon themselves. But God forbid, it doesn't crumple and it falls. If it's right on the property line, you might have a problem there. So I think moving it to the center makes a lot of sense. In reference to what the applicant said, listen, you know, I think you've addressed most of the items that we've talked about previously. You did the balloon test. I mean, you're going to see this thing, and I understand that in any neighborhood, no one wants to see a wireless tower. But let's face it, I mean, it's something we need in our community, and I think it makes sense, okay? And I would say that the landscaping, I told you the last time you were here, that I think it's important. I understand it's at the rear of the fire department, but their picnic tables, you saw the picture that Eric had up, their families, where they have barbecues back there. I mean, it should look nice. I mean, you guys shouldn't do it on the cheap. You should go and do the right thing, I think. So that's really my two cents on the application, so.
Thanks, Reed. Bruce?
No, I agree. I don't.
Michael?
I agree completely, and I, my question is, why no landscaping? Is landscape around the pole such a burden? I really don't see it as that. And there are many events at that location.
So, okay, so what I'll say is this, this was a proposal to try to work within what the code has specified, but certainly, we're before you here tonight and hearing what we're hearing in terms of landscaping, you know, that this is part of the process too, to receive some feedback. And so that's something we can certainly address to, you know, before we get to the public hearing, to make sure that we provide even more landscaping. If there's anything in terms of specific direction to, to help guide us, we would certainly welcome that as well.
I think, I think anything you can do to go above and beyond is important to this project.
All right, understood. All right, we will, we will definitely address that. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Michael. Eva?
All right, I agree with all the sentiments as well, and to, you know, to go up what Michael just said, I agree. I think anything and everything you can bring to the table to, you know, make this acceptable as, as much it can be acceptable by the community, you're not going to please everyone. I think that would certainly help.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, I've been involved, you know, on the board from the original application, and I was, I had a lot of problems with the original submission. I think a lot of the issues that I had with regard to comparing it to what we have in front of us today, a lot of those issues have been mitigated, in my, my view. As far as whether or not this represents a new submission with regard to SECPRA, or it's just sort of an end around by, by the applicant, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, so I reserve judgment on that. I would hope that we can get some legal advice within the Planning Department on that. I also would like to, although I do feel that a lot of the issues have been mitigated with regard to the fall zone, the, the appearance of the monopole versus what was originally proposed, I think that's important. The only thing that, you know, still is an issue with me is even though it falls within the 500-foot line, the, you know, the historic areas, it still can be seen, but, you know, I don't think, if we're going to look for the perfect, we're not going to ever approve anything. So, so that, you know, that's the only sort of gray area for me. And I would also like to reserve judgment to hear what people have to say, neighbors have to say at the public hearing.
Of course, yeah.
I'll still hold back my final decision until I, we have the public hearing.
Understood, thank you, sir. And I'll just add to the, and certainly, we're going to have more discussion about this, but I'll just add at this time that, think about the DEIS, or a DEIS that's filed, and I think Mr. Wayland had ably pointed it out as well, is that the way that they're structured is to presuppose that there is an application on the table. So the application that was on the table was that original design. Certainly, you can go further through the process, but there is a difference between the proposal and the alternatives. And here, this we have elevated to a new proposal that is completely different from what that original proposal was on the table, and that's, that, that's the analysis, that's how you look at it. So I just put forth that initially, but certainly, we will, like I said, provide you some more further detail and in further consultation with the town attorney.
Do you have other precedent where this sort of thing has happened, where one submission was made, and then it was retracted, and a new one was made? And was there ever a case law regarding that type of thing happening?
Yeah.
And how it was resolved?
Yeah, so I don't have that answer for you tonight, I admit. What I have for you is the general standard of res judicata, which I mentioned, but we will also, we will also consider that, and that will be part of our submission as well.
What is that Latin phrase that you use?
Res judicata.
Res judicata.
Correct.
Res judicata.
Res judicata.
Oh, res judicata.
Yes, yes, sir.
Which means what?
I got it right here. I got it right here.
All right, you want to read it?
Go for it. Is a legal doctrine that prevents the same parties from relitigating the same claim or issue that has already been decided by a court in a previous case. So often, it is in that context, in the litigation context, but it has applied in the land use context as well, where one application is filed, and then a new application is filed after that. And so the case that I quoted you was just an example from the second department that had that same consideration, where there was one application, and then there was a second application, and the court essentially said, yes, board, you, you have adequately determined that these are two separate applications, and therefore, you can consider that second new application, because it's materially different enough.
And this is, this is for the planning board to decide? Is that right? Are we the folks who say it's okay that they have this?
They, or I believe that the, correct me if I'm wrong, Brittany, but I believe.
Sure, so the town attorney's office has looked into this, and we do agree that this is a separate distinct application. The previous application was withdrawn, thereby ending the SECPRA process. The application that is before you today is substantially different from the application that was before the board a couple years ago. I don't need to rehash why. Eric has a nice memo here, dimensions, the location, the differences in the service provided and the design, all support the fact that this would be a new application before the board.
Thank you. Thanks so much. So thank you very much. I have just a couple of comments as well. I also see this as a new application. And as to the question of whether this is needed, this is absolutely 100% needed. I work in Springs at Ashwag Hall every Saturday, and there is no service. You know, there are events there, there are people trying to conduct business, there are, you know, medical events that happen, and we have no service. And I'm pretty sure that the, you know, Pollock-Krasner House as well, which is the other side of significance, you know, they have the public coming in and out of there as well. And I do think it's a public safety issue at this point, as well as a convenience issue. You know, this is, you know, one of the most wealthy and wonderful places in the world, and we can't make a phone call when we're driving down Fort Pond Boulevard. So I think it's absolutely necessary. I do agree with the attorney's office and with Eric's assessment that it is a new application, and I appreciate the fact that the applicant has made the substantial changes. I also agree with everybody else as far as the landscaping goes, let's make it pretty. I have events there, too, and it, it would be nice to have, you know, some lovely landscaping back there.
Understood, thank you very much.
So I think we can move on to our questions. Thank you, everybody. Does the planning board find the visual analysis acceptable, or does any additional information, such as additional visualizations, need to be submitted? I don't think so. It's acceptable, yeah. Does the planning board find the screening of the equipment area acceptable?
No.
No. Let's go back to the drawing board with that one. Does the planning board agree with the Planning Department that the submission of information pertaining to exterior lighting and planning department, department approval, if proposed in the future, can be made a condition of site plan, special permit approval, should the board grant it? Now, this is a little bit confusing to me, Eric, because I thought you mentioned that it could be handled with an administrative lighting permit?
Yeah, exactly. And you, you could, so they're not mutually exclusive. You could have a condition of approval that if any additional lighting is proposed, that the applicant's obtained an administrative lighting permit. That's somewhat, yeah, that's somewhat redundant with the code, because any exterior lighting either needs site plan approval or an administrative lighting permit. because any exterior lighting either needs site plan approval or an administrative lighting permit. But that's basically what I was getting at would be that if you do approve it, you could have a condition saying if you do add exterior lighting, you will go and get an administrative lighting permit.
As, as Eric has said, do we agree that if they do need it?
Yeah, that's fine. Yes.
Does the board agree that the EAF Part 1 needs to be revised as per the planning department's comments? We discussed that and you're willing to do that? Yes. Is the application incomplete at this time and until additional further information is provided? And that accordingly, the shot clock for this application should be paused until a release submission has been made?
Right.
Yes.
And we're, you know, again, we're, we're amenable to that just with the interest of, again, looking for that public hearing to be scheduled this week.
Yes. So Eric, are we, we need to wait until all of this is submitted before we can then schedule a public hearing? Is that the procedure?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Great.
We would need a revised EAF Part 1. Once we have that, we will send out lead agency coordination letters or, you know, and finalize SEACRA. After that, if the first step is done, we'll prepare an EAF Part 2 and 3 for the planning board. It is really only after you make a SEACRA declaration that the application would be complete and ready to be scheduled for a public hearing. But there are, you know, only relatively minor revisions and additional information the applicant needs. So we should be able to get there pretty soon.
Great.
And would we, I, I guess the question would be, provided we submit these items, do you see a need for another work session? Or provided Eric signs off, then at that point, we would be able to schedule?
Yeah, I mean, maybe a resolution to schedule a public hearing. Will they not agree with the landscaping?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, we would, since there is going to be changes to the landscaping, the department would want to bring that back before the board to determine if it's appropriate. However, I don't foresee a reason why we couldn't do that concurrently with bringing you in EAF Parts 2 and 3. And also possibly at the same meeting if it is deemed complete scheduling a, a public hearing. So maybe one more.
Great. Thank you, Eric. Thank you so much. All right, now Eric is back on. We're going to have a discussion about affordable multiple residences.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. You guys may, you don't have, you can listen to this if you would like to.
Sure. So this is a continuation of planning board conversation from June 25th. We had gone over a PowerPoint presentation that I had prepared for the town board, gone over the memorandum that was prepared for the planning board detailing this proposed new use. I, not that it's my right to do this, but I assigned you guys some homework of, of reading through everything and thinking of comments and questions for the planning department and for me based on it. Again, this is a proposed new use. It's basically, the idea is to create a mechanism to do multiple residences on properties only within the affordable housing overlay district. There are a very limited number of properties that would be otherwise eligible as we sit here today that have the designation and, and the criteria. The hope is that, irrespective of this use and whether or not it's adopted, the, the hope of the planning department would be that the town board will expand the number of properties that have the affordable housing overlay district designation. That's also called for in the comprehensive plan and at least one of the Hamlet studies. But that's basically a, a separate, you know, effort that needs to be undertaken by the town board. But I want to point that out that this proposed new use will be limited in scope, which is a good thing and a bad thing. We need more affordable housing, but we're talking about a new use that right now would really only be viable on probably one property in the town. Again, the, this, the genesis of this was the fact that you can do an affordable housing development as a specific use in the AHO or Affordable Housing Overlay District, but you need a minimum of three acres to do that. That's one of the specific special permit standards. So the town board a while ago began discussing that there should be a mechanism to do affordable housing on AHO designated properties that are less than three acres. You know, what, an obvious thing you could do is just go to the code and say, okay, you don't need three acres to do an affordable housing development. But affordable housing developments have a density or otherwise permitted density of up to 12 units per acre. That's not going to be appropriate for something that is one acre to do 12 units on a relatively small property. So what we were looking at was doing something that is of lesser intensity, less permitted maximum density of housing units, really something that is intended to fit into a residential neighborhood and also allow an existing residence to be converted into a multiple residence where appropriate, you know, as determined by the town board by giving the AHO designation on the property. One of the other things that we mentioned is there is actually a mechanism in the town code right now called change of single-family residence to two-family residence or other multiple residence. I believe it is a holdover in the code from the old code changes, specifically when ADU regulations were adopted. But I don't see, I don't have any supporting documents to back that up. But that is a use that basically says you can convert a single-family residence to a multiple residence on pretty much any property in the town. It's permitted in all the residential zoning districts and there are no provisions that that multiple residence be made affordable. What we're proposing here is to, you know, remove that existing use in the code, replace it with the affordable multiple residence, which again, limited to the AHO, must be affordable, which means that the residents, the tenants would have to be moderate income families or at 130% of area median income or less. The rent would be capped at 130% of the fair market rent as determined by HUD. And then there are also a, a number of dimensional regulations that, you know, as I mentioned, are meant to help this use fit relatively seamlessly into a residential neighborhood. Obviously, this is a use that would require a special permit from the planning board. So you would get, you would be reviewing these individual sites as they came in and asking for these, for this specific use. With that, I, you know, I won't get into all of the specific dimensional regulations. That's basically the concept here. It's something that myself and Ian Callad-Pievont of the town board primarily have been working on for a while now, over a year. You know, I, I feel, I'll say it, although I don't think I have to, that there is a dire need for affordable housing in the town of East Hampton. When you look at the different types of housing that are permitted under our code to be built, obviously, there's a lot of zoning in this town that's intended for a single-family, a single-family residence, one unit on them. There are provisions for affordable apartments on residential properties, so ADUs or affordable apartments on commercial properties, apartments within commercial structures. There's a provision for full-scale affordable housing development, but there really is no mechanism for affordable multiple residence developments, which would allow someone to take a, a residential property and create two units, three units, four units in a building and have rental units that, you know, in many ways serve as the sort of bridge for people between a small-ish apartment that they might be living in when they're, they're starting out their, their careers and their lives and a home and homeownership. We want, need to have viable rental options for the workforce of the town. So, you know, this is a specific new use. And as far as the code requirements and procedure go, we do want to bring this back to the town board, who has already reviewed it. But the code requires that this be brought, rightly so, requires that this be brought to the planning board for comments as proposed legislation. So also attached or also provided to the board is a draft code that was reviewed by the town attorney's office. I guess one thing I didn't mention is that, another safeguard on this is that it would be required to have an annual permit from the Office of Housing. That is exactly the same as an apartment within a commercial structure or a residential ADU. So with that, I'll sort of leave it to your conversation and any specific questions that you have for me.
Thank you, Eric. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this? Yes.
I have a few comments.
Great.
Okay, I, I think, Eric, I think the idea is a great idea. I'm all for it. I have no problem with it. I just have a few issues or a few items that I think need to be addressed as well. First of all, it seems to me, if I can use an analogy, that if I wanted to build a house personally, I would hire an architect. I would get a building permit. But to use the analogy compared to this, I wouldn't have a piece of land to put the house on. So it's important that we have this code which allows this type of multiple, you know, family affordable housing. But it seems to me there are no designated areas in East Hampton on which we can put these, these multiple family units. So I think it's important for the town board to complete the process and do this, you know, pass this code change, but also make a concerted effort to designate certain areas of East Hampton where you can build these multiple family affordable housing units. So that's number one. I think they should, it should also have a condition where if, if I'm a, someone that, that complies with the restrictions or the requirements to be a resident in one of these units because of my income is capped at a certain level. And then I rent the unit. In one or two years, I excel at my job, I get a raise and I go above the cap. I don't think it's right for me to have to leave that particular residence if I want to stay. So I think that condition should be worked into the code somehow. Also, I think, you know, there's a potential for misuse of this type of affordable housing. By that, I mean, and I, you know, I know that maybe I'm the lone voice on this, but, and again, I'll repeat it, I'm not against affordable workhouse housing. I'm all for it. I think we should have more of it. But I think there's a competition. If we, if we allow it to compete, the affordable housing for the ordinary citizen, the ordinary resident of modest income is going to get locked out in favor of seasonal workers that, that will be put into these types of units. So just to be more clear on that point, if we build these units, these, if we allow these multiple family units to be built and they're, they're bought by businesses or wealthy establishments so that they can house their workers, it takes affordable housing away from the ordinary citizen. They're not going to be able to compete with the wealthy businesses that are going to be able to buy these units. So I think we should put some kind of covenant or some kind of restriction that, that mitigates that sort of competition. So just to expand a little bit on that, you know, my view of the community is one where we allow the children of longtime residents to be able to stay here or other, other residents who want to be able to stay here and afford to live here and have that kind of community. I don't, I don't think any of us want a community where it caters to wealthy second homeowners only. And we turn it into a vicious cycle where establishments are started and built that cater to the wealthy people. Those establishment needs, need workers. They gobble up all the affordable housing for the workers and it just continues in that vicious cycle. And the ordinary people who can't afford to live here, it becomes even more difficult for them to stay. So I think that's why it's important that we gear these affordable housing approaches so that we prevent that kind of thing from happening. Oh, and just lastly, last point. I think we should have some kind of covenant or some, somewhere have some kind of stipulation that this, whatever is built is ad infinitum or, you know, 99 years times two, that kind of thing. It's not going to be something that in 20 years is turned into regular housing and, you know, it becomes again competitive on another level. So I think that's an important covenant that we should build into the, into the code or wherever the town board feels it's appropriate. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Will. Anybody else have any?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, I, I think you made some outstanding points and I think that the proposal is, is a good one, but it, it does need some work. I do have a question though, on the 130% of area median income. What is that number? I, I'm just curious to know. Do you have any idea what that number might be?
I think it's a.
Hold on, I'll, I'll look it up and I'll tell you specifically before I tell you the wrong thing.
And as you're looking that up, I, I will say that I do like the residency requirement. I think that that's important. But the thing I, I get a little worried about, and maybe I misunderstood this, is that, let's say you have two teachers. I'm, I don't know what the 130% of area median income is, but, you know, you have a teacher maybe married to a police officer. I mean, would they be not able to qualify for this?
The most recent median household income for Suffolk County is $119,000.
Oh, 119.
So that.
So 130, so roughly 150, 160?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that regulated, is, is that regulated by, by HUD or?
So it's, I, I, please correct me if I'm wrong, anybody who knows more about this than me, probably Eric and Brittany. But I believe that it is set by New York State, like it's one of those data points that New York State. And then it's by county. So each county.
Municipality. I'm sorry to cut you off, but so the municipality can't, can't flex on that.
So it wouldn't be the, no. And this is a problem that a lot of organizations have because the mean income, you know, for Suffolk County is.
The disparity between east and west is just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Taking the median of.
So, I mean, if, if it were me, I, I'd be inclined to take that up to 200% of the median income. I, I think even then, I mean, it's, it's so hard to live out here and, you know, the cost of living is crazy. And, you know, if you're going to cap people out at what, one, what they're saying, one, what is it? 162 with two people? I mean, that's, that's low.
So this, yeah, so just to give you some background here, this is actually slightly outdated. This has been changed for 2025. This is HUD numbers and basically the effective row to look at is that, you know, what you were looking at there, 130%. It goes by household size though. So as your household increases in size, 130% of area median income is, is larger to reflect added incomes and, and added people in the household. So these aren't exact, but these are very close to what the, the current requirements are. But as far as the, the effective limitation of 130% area median income, that is codified. That's the definition of an affordable, of a moderate income family in the town code. Until and unless the town board changed that to increase it, it kind of is what it is. And if we propose that this use allowed the households to go beyond 130% without also changing that definition in the code, then it wouldn't be affordable housing. Technically, it wouldn't meet that definition under our code. So that's, that's where these come from. It's like, I guess.
Thank you.
I have a question about, you want to go next?
So Eric, I have a couple of questions. You know, you only talk about five lots in your memorandum here that could be used for this. If the town expands the AHO areas, is that a? is that like a general neighborhood? Is that big tracts of land that'll be split up? Or is that just selective parcels here and there? And, and the reason I ask that is, A, is there any thought to a minimum lot size? And then that sort of segues into, you know, how do you, or how do we go about dealing with, you know, total building coverage, all of the calculations that I sort of have to deal with every day, right? And then, you know, is there any thought on how that affects the density in, say, a neighborhood? If, if you're only talking about specific properties that are going to get changed?
Gotcha. So I, I guess, I think the first part of that was kind of related to, you know, where are the, you know, new AHO properties going to be situated? Which properties could potentially have that designation? That is sort of step two in this process. And the planning board, the town board will, will have to determine that. We don't have, you know, other than allusions to it of one of the Hamlet plans says along North Main Street that there's an area that would be good to have a mechanism for multifamily housing. We don't have anything picked out as far as individual properties. I mean, my hope and my understanding of the need is that the town board really should look into adding the AHO to large properties, ones over three acres that are also going to be able to build affordable housing developments, full-scale ones at eight, 12 units per acre, but should also look into smaller properties. And that's really where this proposed use comes in. It's really meant to be a mechanism for the smaller properties. So, you know, I, I can't really answer where, which properties the town board is going to add AHOs to, if any, and whether or not they're going to be large or small. But I think if you're asking me, I believe we need both large and small properties to be added to the AHO.
But how small is too small?
Well, okay, as far as the minimum lot size, this has in it 20,000 square feet is the minimum lot area. All right, you know, so what you need to do is, you can't do, because the only way, trying to think of the best way to describe this, 20,000 is the minimum lot size under the town code for, under, of any of our zoning districts, residential zoning districts. It's also the minimum that the health department requires. The most sort of, I guess the way to put it is forgiving groundwater management zone of the health department is four, which basically allows you 600 gallons per day per acre. So the only way that the minimum size you could ever have to have two single-family residential units would be to have at least 20,000 square feet. So that's the minimum lot area that would be established on this. You couldn't, that's the, the minimum amount that you can do two units or two residences on. As far as the dimensional regulations, what's proposed here, so gross floor area setbacks, total lot coverage, that is proposed just to be whatever the underlying requirement of the residential zoning district is. So in other words, if there was a swath of property in, in an area of town that was zoned, it would be residents, A residents, and the town started considering, you know, adding the AHO to them, you know, the, the affordable multiple residence that someone would want to build other by building a new structure or converting an existing one would have to meet all of the dimensional regulations that they were designing a single-family residence. And in accordance with that, you know, those requirements.
Okay, so 20,000 square foot lots under our new GFA calculations is less than 3,000 square feet allowable.
Yep.
That's pretty small for more than one family.
Yeah, I mean, the most you could do would be to divide that building up into two roughly 1,500 square foot units. It would look otherwise like a single-family residence because it would be meeting the GFA requirements. There's also design requirements in there that would be enforced by the planning board. But you're right, those aren't particularly large, but 1,500 square feet is enough for a family to live in. And if it can provide additional affordable housing, I don't see that as prohibitive.
It's kind of the way it used to be, right?
Can I just pick up on that for a second? Eric, you know, one thing I, I forgot to mention is, I feel that, and this goes to the competition point that I made, I feel that, you know, if, if I look at this from the side of the investor, the builder, if I'm looking at this as a, as an investment where I get a proper return on my investment, I don't think I, I would be interested because I'm capped at what I can earn in rent. And I still have to expend the same amount of money that I would if I bought a home where I could charge market rent. So why would I build an affordable housing unit, albeit it's small, but nevertheless, I could build the same size somewhere else and I could make twice the money? Why would I do that?
Well, it's going to depend on which-
Unless, I'm a business establishment. And I don't, my concern is not a return on my investment, but I need housing for my workers. So, you know, that's, that's the issue that I think is important. I think that should be explored more deeply.
That's a good point. Why would you buy a property?
But I think it's intended more for, you know, families who probably currently have a home.
Not only, no.
Not only, but-
No, because if they expand the, the housing overlay district, then that would potentially encompass making parcels that could be-
That's true. But I mean, you know, I'm thinking of it more in terms of like, for me, I could put a wall down the middle of my house and my daughter could live over here.
But to Lou's point also, you, you also, that necessarily wouldn't be a good business decision on your end because you could do that-
It wouldn't be for business, yeah.
But you could also rent your house for-
Well, that's my point. There would be two parties that it would be good for them to do it. What you described, and a business establishment that needs to house workers. On a purely return on investment basis, nobody's going to-
Always not.
Enjoy it. So it may, anyway, I'm sorry, we're kind of, let's continue.
What do you have to say about that, Eric?
I was going to say, Lou is correct. And I do envision that that is the scenario that's going to be most likely. And, and that was actually one of the reasons why we pursued having a mechanism that legally do multiple residences in the town code is because we looked at all of the legally pre-existing non-conforming multiple residences in town and noted that they were gobbled up by businesses who were looking for, for staff housing. I guess my point would be that if those workers are, again, included in this proposed use is that everyone be a resident, meaning they live or work in the town. If they're someone that lives or works in the town and makes below the, the established line of 130% area median income, then why not? Why, why not give them housing? You know what I mean? It gets them off the road. Yes, these might be mostly gobbled up by employers that are looking to put their employees in there, but I don't see the, the negative to that. I know what you're saying, which is that, you know, a non-employer is going, is not, you know, an employer might be willing to take the hit of the investment in the property and, and doing this work because they need, you know, to be able to house their workers and, you know, the average person, for lack of a better term, would be priced out. I think that's probably true in many situations just because of the cost of real estate here. But consider that, you know, there are a number of properties and areas in, in town that have, you know, properties that are relatively small, around 20,000 square feet, have older structures on them, and could be candidates to do, you know, to basically do an interior change on the building and convert it into a multiple unit. I mean, you know, to that effect is also, and also you have people that own those homes right now. They might want to live in one unit and rent out the other. It helps them live. It also provides a unit for somebody who may or may not, you know, be an employee of a local business. It helps also in that situation. And then the other example I was going to use is just, you know, and yes, we want to see more ADUs, accessory dwelling units in the town, but we have, you know, roughly 40 homeowners in town who have applied and obtained permits from the town just to provide one additional smaller living unit on their property. This, you know, that is permitted basically in any zoning district, provided you meet certain criteria. This allows you to do a little bit more than that, but you can only do it in the AHO. So I would say, you know, we have people looking to add units, not worried about sort of the investment amount on their property. It can, in theory, allow someone who has an existing single-family residence to divide it up internally and live in one of the units and rent out the, the other to a family. So you're talking about a housing unit that is larger than, than an ADU. And, you know, but then coming back full circle, you know, your, your point is correct, though. I think that this will probably be most appealing to local employers. But again, I say, you know, if it's someone who needs-
Eric, to answer, to answer your question, to answer your question, why not? When you say, you know, these housing units will be used by employers. You know, in, I, I've been told, I haven't witnessed it firsthand, but I've been told that in Aspen, it's all wealthy people with huge homes. And there are businesses there that cater to those wealthy people. And the affordable housing is only inhabited by the workers that are needed for those businesses. Now, if that's the kind of community that we want here, yeah, you know, then go, go for it. You know, this is what will, will happen. But if you want a community where somebody rents an apartment or condominium, and if they decide to change jobs, they don't have to worry that they won't be able to live in the unit that they're living in or that, you know, the, the pressure, the leverage is all owned by the employer as to whether or not somebody can stay in an apartment. Well, you know, that's a whole different type of community than I envisioned this community to be. I think what we're trying to do is get ordinary people to be able to afford to live here, the children of people that have lived here for generations to be able to stay and continue the legacy of those families. And I think if we, if we promote affordable housing that's going to be outcompeted by, by employers so that they can house their seasonal workers, I think we've lost the community that we all treasure.
I'm gonna, I think you have a really valid point. And I think that there's a difference between seasonal worker housing and affordable housing. And I think that the town should be very careful to make that distinction. I know from, you know, having worked in Montauk that there, there is a very big need for seasonal housing. The way I think of this is that this would be for year-round employees, right? So each, doesn't, doesn't this include a provision, Eric, for the, the tenant to have to be registered with the housing authority?
Yes.
And if there's a residency requirement, would they have to show like year-round employment? So, so for instance, you know, whatever hotel can't buy a house and just say they're renting it to their employees. The employee would then have to get approval to live in that house and sign the lease. So I, I hope, because I, I don't think, I think you're right. I don't think that's what we want. We don't want just the, you know, workers coming out every summer. Yes, and then, and then have the houses sit vacant. That's not a community. I agree.
Well, it is a community, but it's a different kind of community.
Exactly. So Eric, is that, is that the intent, that they would be year-round residents?
Yeah, so I, I guess there's two things there. One is, and this is, I, I'm not 100% sure where the town board landed on this, but I know where we are right now. It would be very much like the other forms of affordable housing that we have in the town where the leases would need to provide for a minimum of one year. So you couldn't rent something out for a month. It's not for short-term rentals. And there's a residency requirement. This isn't necessarily going to obviate the concerns that Lou had, but there's a residency requirement that it be somebody who lives for work in the town of East Hampton, you know, at the time that they're applying for the permit with housing. So, and yes, housing would be required to review any new tenant that went into any of these units when they go in and would also, on a minimum of a year, yearly basis, review permits. So if some, you know, the landlord owner of the unit had a tenant that they wanted to put in there, they would first have to get approval of housing. They would check that they meet the income restriction. They would review a copy of the lease to see that it was for a minimum of one year. They would review documentation related to proving that the tenant is a resident. And then they would do that on a yearly basis until a new tenant is found, which couldn't happen sooner than, than a year. So those are basically the restrictions that relate to it. It doesn't completely eliminate what, what Lou was saying. But, you know, it, it is intended to be for year-round residents.
Interesting. I, I mean, I do think there is a need for workforce and seasonal housing, but I don't think this is the mechanism. That's my two cents. Michael? And Ava, you haven't gone yet either, sorry.
I can't follow Lou. That's hard to follow. But I, I do want to, I think it's important to, to highlight that a resident is not just someone who lives here but works in East Hampton and may travel long distance, may be in this room with us right now. But it's like, but also says that that person has to have worked for five years before they're eligible.
That seems-
Right, that's what it says right there.
No, 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 it's-
What does that mean?
That's based, that's based off the definition of a resident that's in the Community Housing Fund law. It says that if somebody lived within the town within the past five years-
Within the past five years, not four.
Oh, within, alright.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. My final point is, there is a, it says, there is a mandate as a change of use or new use, so it's a mandate for low nitrogen sanitary. Common sense. Why can't there also be a mandate for like solar? Or, or better insulated homes that don't require as much energy?
Well, we are required by HERS right now to, for every permit that goes in for a new house, it does have to get a HERS rating, which is an energy report.
Okay.
So houses now are hyper-insulated.
Do they need solar? Is that a requirement?
It used to be, depending upon the house size. It was 3,500 square feet, you need solar or a trade-off for geothermal or something like that.
Okay. Well, I'd like to see solar on there as an option.
That would increase your investment costs.
I think it's sort of like the-
Exacerbate that issue.
But so, back to this greater point, though. I mean, who's buying these houses? Isn't like there are subsidies, government, the town, the county, the state are providing money to? It's not like, it's not the private investor, I'm going to make some money and, you know, flip this house.
No, there isn't. But you, you bring up a good point. I think it would work better, and we haven't talked about this, if you had some kind of housing trust with some kind of philanthropic organization that got involved. Because then you would eliminate that problem of return on investment.
Well, we do, the town does have the tax, the new tax that goes into the affordable housing.
Right, but they're, they're not, they're not planning, the town, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but the town is not planning on subsidizing any of these, these multiple-
No, this would be private.
These would be private, but you can apply for, for funding from the town, right?
So this is meant to be a mechanism in the code that doesn't discriminate between, you know, who the, the applicant is. It's meant to be something that, you know, any, any private individual can do. What we're asking of the owner is basically a simple sort of landlord responsibility. We have ADUs in town, we have apartments within commercial structures. There's nothing that stops, you know, as, as long as this use is permitted under our town code. Because right now, you know, Windmill, the East Hampton Housing Authority, the other housing corporations that are out there, they couldn't buy a property and try to do a multiple residence of- a multiple residence of, maybe eat an AHL property. There's nothing that prevents them, once and if this use is created and properties are so designated where, where it would be allowed, there's nothing that prevents them from buying it, accepting state or county grants or anything like that from the town and building one of them. You know what I mean? But it's not, I don't see that as necessary. I don't know, I see the prudence of that. If you're talking about a full-scale affordable housing development, that's gonna be 40 units and 40 different households right on top of each other, I don't think you absolutely need the management, you know, abilities of a housing corporation like that when you're talking about a handful of units on a property. So I don't think it's inherently necessary that it be designed that way. And really, the idea here is to create something that the, the open market, the free market can, can apply for and that doesn't necessarily require, you know, government subsidy.
I thought, was your question more about funding to do the projects or was it about-
No, it wasn't a question, it was a comment saying that, and Michael, you know, triggered it. It's, there's no, this is a private investment type of project. So without philanthropic contributions, you're gonna get, you're gonna, it's like, it's a free market, it's a, which, you know, it's good in many areas. I'm all for a free market and capitalism. But with regard, if we're trying to build affordable housing, we're not, and we're going to rely on private investment. I don't, you know, it's gonna get outbid by establishments that have money and they're gonna house their workers. And again, there's no, if you're a seasonal worker, like you're a doctor, not, that's not seasonal worker, you know, you're a doctor or a fireman, that's fine. But what if you're, you know, a dishwasher or a waiter and you work in Miami in the winter and you come here for the summer and the restaurant needs to house all of those waiters? They're gonna buy these units and put them up. They're doing it now. They're searching for housing units to do it. So if it's a free competitive market, they're gonna win. And what you're gonna, and this is not going to solve the problem of affordable housing for year-round residents, children of people that have lived here for ages, that kind of thing. But, you know, I think that's an important point.
I think it is. And I think, I mean, I do, again, I think there's a need for that, but this-
Yeah, I agree.
It's, it's a-
But you need to separate.
Yeah.
You gotta make sure that, you, you, if you think you're addressing one area-
You're-
But it's gonna get gobbled up by another area, you're not accomplishing what you set out to do.
Do you think the one-year lease will deter businesses from purchasing or they'll just, they'll just eat it?
One-year lease and, you know, Joe Schmo lived there six months and maybe it'll be empty for the other six months or maybe they'll put somebody else there.
Yeah.
I think it's a bigger issue, right? If you own two acres, why would you, why would you do this?
On two acres?
I mean, even if you, listen, even if you've got a 20,000 square foot lot, why would you do this?
Unless, you know, unless-
Because you're not gonna-
There's not enough space for it to be, yeah.
The income you're coming back, the income coming in isn't enough to even maintain the property.
There, there are business establishments that have, you know, chefs or important key individuals that they need.
So-
So they're going to take a hit. It's worth it for them to, you know, to buy one of these, two of these units on a half acre they'll have. And they'll be able to put, you know, so Eric, it's two bedrooms or three bedrooms that you can, and you can have, you can have a person per bedroom or two people per bedroom. So you, you, you can stuff four, six people in that half acre. It might be worth it for, but it's not gonna be worth it for a private individual, a private developer to get into this business. It's just not.
So-
Unless there's an incentive.
Unless there's an incentive.
Huge incentive.
And I wonder, Eric, you mentioned that like 40 applications are before the building department now to build ADUs. Is that because they've gotten funding from the town through the-
No, the town doesn't have a-
There are none in this town.
The town, the town's proper, doesn't have a, um, ADU construction assistance program yet.
Okay.
They're working on one. There is a state-derived grant program that the housing office is administering that has given some grants, but for the most part, most of the ADUs in town were built by the property owner.
Yeah. So, I mean, it might be like that where there is a need for it and I, I think the town has to consider putting more regulations on it to preclude the use by seasonal workers. And I don't know that I have an answer.
That's our comment.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be a good comment for the town, that there has to be some-
Very defined.
Very defined language about the-
And I think those other couple of points that I made, Eric, I think if the board agrees, we should include it too, which is-
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, if you're gonna build these, it's gotta be for a long time.
Yeah.
Ninety-nine years times two, that kind of thing. And also if somebody's income rises during their residency, they can't be kicked out because they've, they've exceeded the maximum rent restriction or cap.
There has to be some sort of length, like some sort of-
Right, Eric? Do you agree on that one?
Yes, I do.
Do you guys all agree on that as well?
Well, you could do the, extend the lease to five years instead of one year. Shoot it to five or 10.
Right.
But then mutually agreeable, they could-
But you, but if you extend, you mean the tenant extends it? Yeah, but you may want the flexibility of wanting to move out. You don't want to tie yourself in-
Right, well, you open-ended it. If they want to leave, you can break the lease. But you-
Sixty days notice or something, yeah.
You mean structure it so that the lease is only binding on the owner instead of both? I mean, the owner needs-
I don't know, that doesn't work either. I think that goes against fair housing.
Again, we're talking about a private, private business, private developing.
Yeah, I think the town board should discuss that, like what happens if it is a business, you're living at, you know, you're living kind of at the will of your employer and something happens and you lose your job. Do you then also lose your housing? And I think you're right, that's a devastating-
Yeah.
Situation to, to have to deal with, right? At the same time, you lose your job and your house. Because you don't, we don't, the town shouldn't become like a company town where, you know, you have to shop at the company store and live in the company house and-
Well, maybe this-
As in the Old West.
This zoning change is precludes businesses.
Yeah, maybe. Oh, maybe.
Yeah, if, if businesses are already gobbling up whatever they can-
Interesting.
In a legal fashion and, you know, going through that process, that's, process is already in place.
The problem with that is that if you're going to make it a private enterprise, I don't know, Eric, do you think it would be legal to ex, to exclude a certain faction of the community of the?
I think you already have your answer.
All right, all right. I think we're treading on, yeah.
But you got our main points, right, Eric?
Yes, I do, and I've been taking notes as we go along.
Um, but I think overall, are we in favor in general of this new use with some serious?
Pro guise or-
Yeah.
I think the concept is fine. I think it's a ton of work that needs to be done.
Yeah. There you have it, Eric. We agree. We like it, but a ton of work needs to be done.
It looked good until we started looking into it.
That'll be the last time you ask us for our comments.
Well, no, no, it won't. It's a code requirement. But I, just to bookend there, I will draft comments for the board and send it around to the board too.
Fabulous.
If they have any questions, time to call Jen.
Only until Ed gets back. Um, thank you. That was a really interesting discussion. I appreciate it. Moving on to our regular meeting, we have a board of review for Weatherall, which is... Is this RIUs? This is me to read. Jody, what am I gonna do when you're not here to tell me?
When was Jody calling?
That's for after. Do I read the whole thing?
Just the highlights of Edgar's tax map number.
Okay, gotcha. This is the matter of, whereas the town engineer is brought before the board of review, the request of Barry Weatherall for a building permit on-premise located at 21 Delavan Street Springs. Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300-95-5-49 for road improvement units. Clear and prune existing vegetation within the shoulder area of Delavan Street on both sides of the roadway, starting at the intersection of Harbor Boulevard and Delavan, continuing along Delavan for 400 feet and starting at the intersection of Gardeners Lane and Delavan and continuing south along Delavan Street for a distance of 330 feet. Clean the existing catch basins on Delavan Street and Gardeners Lane for a total distance of 4,635 linear feet as directed by the town engineer. Some paving. It is 4,500 road improvement units for a total of $22,500. Do I, I'd say I have read the resolution and move for approval. I have read the resolution and move for its approval.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Hold file map application. To be honest, I don't think I've ever done one of these, hold file map applications. Jody, are you sure you don't mind messing up how I did this one? Sorry.
The street, the tax map number. I'm saying that you-
Okay. In the matter of the request for determination by this board for road improvement units required, is this the same one?
This is the same one.
This is the same one. 21 Delavan Street?
Well, 21 Delavan, on the next page has Ralph Rustu, which is the exact-
So, but, but this also says 21 Delavan.
Two different issues.
But two different owners?
One might have been one.
Oh. It is the same.
It's the same amount of money.
Amount of, it's the same work on both sheets.
The format's just different.
Yeah. Yeah. It's the same work, clear and pruning the existing vegetation. Eight, 400, yeah, it's the same. 90 feet by 24.
It's just a copy. It's the same exact one.
It's the same thing.
And that's, it's just the engineer's paperwork or something, I don't know.
Um, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're in favor of both of those documents.
Yeah. Lou especially is in favor of both of those documents. All right, minutes.
Oh, you read.
I, I looked, well, I looked at them, but I, there wasn't really much there, right? It was this short meeting.
It was a very short meeting.
I didn't see anything here.
So we have read the minutes and we move for their adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we talk? Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Before we, and yeah, I just want to mention that unfortunately tonight is Jody's last planning board meeting. She is retiring after 34.65 years.
Jody!
Yeah.
Oh my God.
So-
I miss you guys.
Jody, I can't thank you enough-
We're on the, we're on YouTube.
For all of the help in the last year and a half. I've not been around for as long as some of these others, but thank you.
You can still watch every Wednesday?
Let's go bring candy.
Yeah, that's why she gave me the good advice today.
Thank you, Jody.
Congratulations, Jody.
Congratulations.
Read.
Make a motion to conclude the meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.